The Cloud City Council is a podcast that discusses the Star Wars comics, including the latest published editions. If you have not caught up, we would encourage you to do so, then come back later. Also, we discuss some news and rumors. If you do not want to hear spoilers for any movie in the production, we would recommend skipping our news section.
Hello, what have we here?
Welcome to the Cloud City Council.
I have been waiting for you.
Featuring Robert and Jonathan as they talk Star Wars comics from a long time ago and a galaxy far, far away.
Light them up. All of them.
And here I thought we were friends.
This is a dangerous time for you.
Everything's perfectly alright now. We're fine. We're all fine here now, thank you. How are you?
The force is strong with this one.
Hello and welcome to the Cloud City Council, a podcast where we talk about all things Star Wars with a particular focus on Star Wars comics. My name is Jonathan and my co-host is Robert.
Hey, everybody.
Alright, so, we haven't got a huge... well, I shouldn't say we haven't got a huge... we've actually got quite a large news item list this week. Um, so let's start from the top, I guess, and the first one is Celebration. Not really surprising, it's coming in two weeks, as Robert corrected me earlier today when I realized I thought it was this weekend and it's actually next weekend, the weekend following. So, you know, learn and learn, right? But nonetheless, even out of that, we've still got rumors and rumors and rumors. Uh, rumor number one is that the... well, I don't know if it's a rumor now, if it's actually official, that they're actually simulcasting the announce, the discussions from Kathleen Kennedy and, uh, and, um, J.J. Abrams worldwide. So there's gonna be an opportunity to see it in lots of different countries and lots of different places. I, I can't remember if they ever did announce that yet or not. I think they did, though. Place in London, don't remember now. Something Square, anyway. Oh! Piccadilly Circus, boy, why did I think that was Trafalgar Square? I don't know why. Anyway, Piccadilly Circus, I believe. I could be wrong, and it may be Trafalgar Square. Either which way, it's one of those two places, and if you're in London, I'm sorry, I've just confused the two places, because they're not even remotely the same. So, that's the first thing. I don't know about other locations, I haven't heard anything yet, yet I've heard rumors that there will be other locations across the world. And so, I don't know whether it'll be in theaters or out in the public, or what, so... Hopefully it doesn't rain, because if it's outside and it actually is in Trafalgar Square, then that's not gonna be the most fun thing to do, but if you're a real, if you're a Star Wars fan, you may do it anyway. If you're a real Celebration, not especially. Uh, that's number one. Uh, number two is I'm hearing rumors that, uh, we will see a trailer at this Celebration, which doesn't surprise or shock me, as I think most people have thought that was coming anyway. Um, but there was actually an outline of what it was like, if you were looking around on the internet. I did not read it in advance, because I'm sort of hoping to get to see it before I'm spoiled for this particular trailer, at least. Uh, can't say so for the movie as such, but at least for the trailer, I don't want to be completely spoiled on what's in the trailer. Which, I'll be honest, the last trailer, I actually knew at least half of what was in it before it actually came out. And I may end up still finding out, considering we have another week to go yet, and I listen to a lot of Star Wars podcasts, and they tend to see us talk about this kind of stuff. No surprise there, really, considering what we're doing. So, the third rumor is actually, uh, number two in our news items, which is that Battlefront is coming to Celebration, which is not a rumor, we all know that's the truth, that the, sort of the first look at the video game by the general public will be at Celebration. As E.I., E.E.A. is bringing it to, uh, to Celebration. However, what we hadn't heard was an actual release date. We knew they'd always said the fall, or at least late fall 2015. But now, we've got a possible release date of December 10th, which would put it just over a week away from the movie. Uh, even though they've said there's nothing to do with the movie and the game, I would not be stunned to see a DLC come down later that includes stuff from the movie, but at least for now, it's, it's all original trilogy, from what I understand, for the most part. And from what we've seen, it looks quite stunning, but that's only mostly on a few visuals, and it doesn't give you much of a clue as to how the gameplay actually works. Any thoughts on that, Robert?
Well, I played Battlefront 2 this past weekend, and it was enjoyable, but it reminded me of, well, it was... What I was disappointed in is the fact that everything was all the same, and the single player was basically multiplayer against the computer. So hopefully I'm, they're expanding a little bit on that game.
I would assume so. I, I, considering they're building it around sort of the Battlefield-esque style, I would assume that they'll have sort of a single-player variety as well, but I, you know. Depends on what you want out of it. I really enjoyed the multiplayer aspect, actually, more than I did the single player, but then that was one of those ones you could play with four people on the console, so that was typically what I ended up doing.
Yeah. My only thing is you actually need people. And, I mean, when I played it with my brother, it was great, but then he was sleeping in the morning, so I played by myself.
Yeah, and I'm pretty sure this is gonna be an online multiplayer, very similar to other first-person shooters that way. I would be stunned if they did it the way that they did it, what, almost 15 years ago now? Well, no, not that long, but I guess it's only, it's just under 10, I guess, for Battlefront 2.
I mean, Battlefront 2 had online multiplayer too, except we don't have gold and there's no one playing it now.
Right.
So, when I did play it, I have, I have a copy on my PC, so I played it with some friends when it came, when it was released or something, and we played it for weeks on it, and it was super fun.
Yeah. Yeah, it's a fun game to play. I love, love the ability to be a Jedi. I think that's my favorite part of that whole thing, or Sith, if that's the case, maybe. Um, but yeah, that's, that was one of the developments from that game that I really enjoyed, so I'm, I'm looking forward to seeing what this is. I have expressed in the past, both here and on Nerd Institute, that I'm concerned about the fact of who is actually running the game, uh, because I'm never been a huge fan of E.A.'s tendencies with video games these days. But hopefully it will not be what I might fear it to be, and it'll be more like the original Lucas Films release, which was really good. Or Lucas Arts, I guess, is what they called that division. That's definitely, I think, one of the more interesting things from my perspective as well, is seeing what that game's gonna be like and seeing kind of how that... Because that comes out before E3, which comes out, which is in the, towards the summer, so... It's kind of the very first look we get at it, and it's the first time we get opinions from people who aren't the developers on what this game's like, so...
True.
I think it'll be interesting to kind of see what the public's thoughts are, rather than, you know, game reviewers or, or the, uh, actual producers of the game. Because for me, that's always a big determinant now for me buying games, because I've been burned a few too many times buying a game because a reviewer talked it up and it turned out to be not as good as I was hoping. Mmm, destiny. So, okay, so there's, there's that one for this week. And more will be coming, I assume, next week on Celebration. I'm sure we'll get even more news about who's gonna be there. I think the biggest thing with all of this is, is I think it'll be curious to see the aftermath of Celebration and kind of what comes out of it, because I think there's gonna be a lot of things that even we don't know about right now that will come out of it, which I think will be interesting. So, next thing on our news list is that, uh, Lucas Films announced that Star Wars Weekend is returning to Disney World on May 2nd. That runs every weekend from the beginning of May to the end of May. Uh, it's kind of like, as they call it, a mini Celebration that happens in Disney World. So, if you're down that way, that might be a way, if you didn't get to Celebration, for you to check something similar out. It definitely has a much more Disney flavor than I think Celebration, well, obviously Celebration did in the past, and I expect will have this time. I don't think it'll be Disneyfied quite the way this Disney Weekend, Star Wars Weekend is. But, uh, I know a lot of people who've gone to it, have talked very highly of it, and it does end up having videos on YouTube quite often. And so, it doesn't take much to find out what's going on there. And they also have kind of curious little things, like they typically have guest stars, and they've had Mark Hamill last year, and this year I already know that they're having Kenny Baker, I believe is scheduled to be there. And, uh, Ian McDermott's scheduled to be there, the Emperor himself. Uh, so, you know, there is a few people already in the line. They're usually, you know, it's, it's not as heavy with guests as it would be for a Celebration, but it'll definitely have a number of people, so... As I say, it is, it is entertaining. I've heard lots of good things. If you love Disney World and Star Wars, this is a great tie together of both of those particular things. And, uh, you know, have a good time, and it definitely exposes people who may not necessarily be huge Star Wars fans to a, to an atmosphere of Star Wars in the, in the park, because they have a parade and everything. It's, it looks cool. Like I said, I've never been, so I couldn't tell you, but just from watching and other people experiencing it, it sounds like it's pretty cool. Next on our news list is the announcement that Star Wars, the Clone Wars, is still among us, in one category at least, in receiving awards, as the lost missions, which were released on Netflix last year, received seven Emmy nominations, which I think is an amazing achievement for six episodes. Or, no, 13 episodes, 13 episodes. So it was a small release, um, but it had some of my favorite arcs out of all of the Clone Wars were in there, because there were so many things that were very important to what would come in Revenge of the Sith. So there was a lot of interesting ideas and, and possibilities that were carried forward through that particular online series. And, uh, I'm still trying to track down a Blu-ray that doesn't cost a fortune. But, I, good for them. I, I, I hope they win, because I think they, they deserve to win at least a few. Uh, there was some great acting and some good set design, and, and I think the overall look of the Clone Wars just got better and better and better as the years went on. The last, last year they won a few awards, so I'd be very shocked if they didn't win some this year. And, uh, here's hoping, because honestly, I think they deserve it, because a lot of those people are still working on Rebels, but, you know, there are some people who didn't, didn't move across with the new show, and I think they should be recognized as well. And on our final news item is the, and it just came out earlier today as we record, which is Monday, which is the finalist for This is Madness, as we finally reach the final round, the same night that we get the finals of the NCAA March Madness. It's Vader versus Obi-Wan in a rematch of last year. So, okay. I will be frank and say, I don't know why Obi-Wan's up here again. I kind of had a soft spot for him last year and kind of hoped he won last year, but it's like, really? Does he really need to be here two years in a row? Who's voting for this guy? I mean, they even put up the old Ben picture over the Ewan McGregor hottie picture. And he still got there, so, and even beat Han Solo, Han Solo to get there. So it's like, okay, interesting. And Vader is, I mean, I don't know who else you'd have from the other side anyway, because outside of Vader, if Vader doesn't win this year, I think it's a crock. That's all I'm gonna say. I think, I think he should win this time.
Well, theoretically he should, but seeing on how Obi-Wan has gotten the path to victory again, maybe we'll see however he got up to there.
Yeah, yeah. Well, it was kind of funny, because I know the, um, I know a couple of people have already thrown up their arms over the public voting system because of some of the voting that went on, and how some characters got in and some didn't, and how Jar Jar got into another round, which really stunned people and had a lot of people talking about, oh, these are all joke votes. So, I don't know whether that's what's happening, but nonetheless, I wouldn't terribly surprise me, to be honest. But, it just, it's like, really? Vader? Come on, he's gotta win one of these. And, you know, if you're gonna have a rematch, he should at least win the rematch.
True.
Personally, that's my feelings. Otherwise, you know, Boba could be there, Darth Maul could be there, the Emperor could be there. I mean, there are other options on the other side too, but it is definitely the weaker bracket, I think, than the, than the light side, where there's so many other really popular characters, and I mean, Luke Skywalker hasn't made it past, I don't know, the second or third round, ever, as far as I know? Which always amazes me. But, I, I realize it's, this is only the third year, so "ever" is kind of, you know, a funny way of bringing that up, but it, uh, it definitely always surprises me the way this finishes up, so we'll see, we'll see what happens. I've cast my vote already, and I'm sure you can figure out by my comments who I voted for. But, we'll see who wins. Hopefully it all works out the right way and, you know, see which, which, uh, master or apprentice can win the nomination this year. Okay, so, to move away from our madness, huh huh.
We'll go to some more madness.
That's right, we'll go into comic madness. Ooh, it's almost as bad as Reefer Madness, but you didn't hear that from me. Mostly from my pocketbook, it seems. This week passed, on Wednesday, Kanan, the Last Padawan, came out, which of course is, is the character from Star Wars Rebels series, and the, uh, first issue of his comic came out uh, this week, kind of carrying, it begins in the Rebels' ghost ship, with them all sitting there and talking about going to a location, and that twigs in the memory of Kanan, who then twigs back to his former self as a Padawan with his Jedi Master, fighting on that particular planet in the middle of the Clone Wars. And of course, the, the book is really well drawn. I loved the art in that book. I thought it was really great. I think they did a really good job of setting some interesting kind of ideas. One of the things that sort of stood out for me was there's a, a drawing of of Kanan standing on a bunch of, I think it's Kanan, standing on a bunch, in an area where there's a bunch of dead troopers and, and, and battle droids, but that it's been done in a way and shaded in a way that, that they're kind of colored like the ground, so you don't really notice them until you start looking. So there's that kind of thing. There's, there's a few of the, the ideas that are in it which are interesting, and kind of the discussions that he has with his master give you the impression that his master was not, uh, on the same page completely with the rest of the Jedi Council, and it already started to be a little bit dilu, dilu, uh, diluted? Not diluted, a little bit disillusioned is the word I'm looking for. Um, with the Council as a whole, at least some of the goals, and specifically what was going on with the war, I mean, she makes a big deal about the fact that they're not generals, that they shouldn't be considered as, as leaders of armies, but rather as Jedis, which are different than that, and it, it's interesting to sort of see this, because you're kind of getting that little backstory on his life going into Rebels, and I think it'll be interesting, as we've discussed several times before, to see how this works with this particular story, because I think he, his, you know, how long are they gonna keep it going? Is it gonna be a miniseries? Is it gonna be a long-term series? Are they gonna do it for the duration of the cartoon show? Uh, I just don't know, and, and I've not seen any indication as to whether it's a short series or not, so... Any thoughts there, Robert?
Uh, coming from someone who doesn't actually know anything about the show, I think it was an okay comic. Um, it's going to show you, at least for everybody who knows the character, get to see more information about him, like we have with the Princess Leia comics. And then I'm all for, and it's going to be interesting to see how this plays out in the timeline, because this will be Kanan, and it'll be more of this is what happened in between A and B. So that's what I'm excited for. I'm not really so into the character development, um, but it's going to be good. I, I can see that right from the beginning. So I'm gonna be happy to buy these, even though I'm not 100% invested in these, if you know what I mean.
Yeah, yeah. Well, if you're not watching the series, that's definitely a non-investment right there. The, the other thing is with this series, which I find interesting, is that the writer of the series, Greg Weisman, is actually, or was a contributing, was the, a producer on Rebels, and had contributed to the storylines in Rebels, so he has a really good understanding about where this character's coming from, because he was involved with, you know, the early development of the show. So I think his influence on this comic will also be another good thing for kind of giving you a better understanding of things. I, I do agree with you, though, it'll, even if you don't watch the episodes of the show, this does give you a, a point to start from, which you don't necessarily have to know for sure. Um, even though you kind of do get a glimpse of the ghost crew, outside of that, you're really dipped straight into his past life without much of a stop, so... If you haven't read the book or, or watched the show, it might be slightly confusing, but, you know, it doesn't take long to sort of kind of go, okay, this is where we're positioned, I remember this from the movies, blah, 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 you know, so... And of course, it then adds on the cliffhanger, which was kind of annoying for those of us that were going, well, I thought this was gonna be in the first second of the book, not the last second of the book. And left me going, oh man, you mean I gotta wait another month for this?
You have to wait a month to see either the full resolution or half a resolution.
Or a quarter resolution, yeah, exactly. And it's like, really? Okay. So, yeah, that was, that, I think that was the biggest thing for me. It was kind of like, well, I really wish that it spent a little less time talking about these aliens that are on the planet, and more time talking, getting to the nub of what's gonna happen.
Well...
But if, if you're right, and the development is longer than I'm thinking it'll be, then it makes sense that it would have been such a big lead-up.
Well, I really enjoyed that, though, like...
Yeah.
It really emphasized the fact that it's one war mongler taking over from another. And then, and then you get that whole aspect of, well, are the Jedi really the good guys?
Yeah, which, again, when you're coming from it from your perspective, it, it makes sense that that would, that would draw you in. My, my problem is I watched five years of the Clone Wars where they've talked about exactly this kind of stuff, so it wasn't unfamiliar territory for me, so it's kind of like, come on, come on, let's get to the end, get to the end. I know about all this. I've seen this stuff. I know they're basically considered to be two sides of the same coin, basically. And, uh, for a lot of worlds, it was like, eh, who cares who wins, because no matter what happens, we're just gonna be subjugated. But, that, that, that development for me was kind of like, oh, that's not as exciting, come on. As I've said on other places, I think the interesting fact could be that we, I mean, I might be seeing is a development where that becomes very important to the story, so my poo-pooing of it this round might change come next round, much like the way I poo-pooed Princess Leia number one and Love number two, and kind of made me rethink my opinion of number one.
Yeah, and just remember, this is how the Empire gains partial control over everything.
Yes, absolutely. Yeah, it all has bearing, it's just, for me, it was kind of like, oh. But I know about all this. Uh, so that's, that was last week, which was good, and this week, of course, continues Darth Vader number four, which, it feels like they're issuing that every two weeks. And I'm not sad by this, because to be fair, Darth Vader's been my favorite of the comics that have come out so far in the Star Wars universe. And I'm very curious to see where this one's going. The preview looked really interesting, so...
Yeah. You say that, and then in five weeks, you're gonna be like, finally!
Yeah. Why can't we get to the rest of it? Yeah. Yeah, it, well, it always, what it, one thing this does do is it always reminds me of the conversation I had with, uh, with, uh, Teresa Delgado, where she was saying that, uh, she doesn't buy individual comic books, because they don't get the story fully out until you get to the end of the arc, and that's when they publish them in trade paperbacks. And I just have no patience for that, that's the problem. I just can't wait around for that. No way. I mean, even if I wasn't doing this podcast, I'd probably still be buying the comics, although I might be a slightly more selective on which comics I was buying. But I'd still be reading them all, I'm sure. Because, I mean, I still read a lot of the Dark Horse ones, at least at times, compared to other things. I don't know. It, it all, I don't know what I would have done, to be honest, but it, uh, I, I sympathize with her idea, though, whenever I'm in this situation where I've read a comic and it feels like it went by in a snap, and I'm like, no, we need to continue. And Darth Vader number four, I definitely am looking forward to. I think this, they've set this up really interestingly. I think, I think this is a really cool way to do the hunt for Luke Skywalker. And, and it, it's quite clever the way they've done it, because they put on these little, little triggers back to either the old movies or to other movies, and and they give you a real sense of, of being in the universe, which is really cool. Darth Vader number four, we're excited about, I guess, is what, is what I'm saying, anyway. So I guess we're at the point where we need to talk about the ones that we were reading last, or this, for this week, which is Star Wars Marvel Old Series 30 to 34. And so this is the point where I turn it over to Robert to explain what went on in the comic book this week.
This week, um, don't remember if it was 30? I thought 30 was the one that had Princess Leia, so it was 31 to 34.
Yeah, it was.
Okay. So I'll explain 30, just in case we didn't cover it last week, but Princess Leia, she's going off on her own mission to, um, gather forces, and she ends up going to this one planet, mining planet, to talk to her old mentor. And in the process, quote-unquote, "they don't do anything", but to Princess Leia, she's spreading, she's planting the seeds of ideas, and that's going to grow into fruition. Uh, that's what all 30 was about, and then from 31 to 34, we have a little mini arc of Luke Skywalker during the exact same period as Princess Leia being gone. And what he needs to do is he's supposed to be out there looking for blockade runners, because the Rebels are getting blockaded, and they're gonna need a way to go leave the planet, to go to the new base, and all this and that, and he's sent to go find them. And he's just like, "I'm gonna go to Tatooine to try and figure out or find these blockade runners." Well, as he's there, he meets up with some friends from when he used to live there, and they're working for the Tarkin family, which, if you guys don't remember, they're the ones who are helping the Empire. Uh, the one guy who had the visor made and went up to duel Darth Vader and got his eyes
Burned.
Burned and gone.
Yeah, it was the Tag family, not the Tarkin family.
My bad.
That's okay, no worries.
Um, so he, they're out there, he's been buying up land in Tatooine, because he knows that this is where Luke Skywalker's from, so for some reason, he's thinking, Luke Skywalker's gonna come back here and I can start my vendetta for revenge, because that's all he cares about, is revenge, 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 and getting his family forward. Well, of course, because it's a story, Luke obviously goes back to Tatooine. And as he's talking to his friends, uh, he's at his old moisture farm. That's where he runs into him, and he starts heading back towards Mas-Ezly, Mas-Ezly. And they run into a banta that's been frozen solid, sort of. And he's just like, "That shouldn't happen. It's like 500 billion degrees out here." And then these stormtroopers come around, they're just like, "Kill it!" Kill the banta, and Luke's like, "We gotta get to this, to the cantina." Walks into the cantina. As soon as he walks in, of course, the scraps breaking out, and who other to run into than Han Solo and Chewbacca? And his friend comes in, he's just like, "Hey Luke, uh, guess what? Because we aren't the great, in greatest standings here, we kind of readyed you out." And Luke's like, "What? Bro, we were friends. What?" And Han's like, "No, bro, Luke, we need to scape now." And so they escape. The speeder that they're going into malfunction, so they have to start working with the Jawas. Jawas are taking them around, and they go past this giant thing that looks like a moisture farm, but it's not. What it is, is something that can freeze the entire thing. Whatever moistens in the air turns straight to ice. And they were doing a test out here. Luke finds out this is what it does, saves all the Jawas, so the Jawas are helping him for not, for saving their lives. They end up going back to the Millennium Falcon, following the ship to this planet of where the Rebels get all their supplies. Luke, uh, finds out what their plan is, quote-unquote, and they're going to freeze the planet, so to say. And Luke, in the process, Luke gets captured, and he's just like, "Han, tell the Rebels that this is gonna happen." And Han's like, "Okey-dokey." And that's not the plan at all. The plan is to put these ice dinghies in this asteroid belt, so as the Rebel fleet comes through, it freezes everything. And in the process, Luke fights the Baron, and Luke gets in touch with his inner Jedi and the Force powers, and defeats the Baron, even though he has no skills. He just uses the Force to win and sense everything. And he escapes the ship, lands on an asteroid that has one of the towers that makes everything turn to ice. And he's in the process of trying to destroy it before the Rebel ships come in. And this mad scientist, who's also a brother of the Baron, just like, "We need to deploy now." So they freeze everything in front of the fleet, and the fleet's like, "Oh no, we can't do a full reverse." And they can't escape what's going to happen. So they continue going forwards, but at this time, Luke manages to destroy the special tower that makes everything ice, thus allowing the Rebel fleet to come in, destroy the ship that was holding everybody, and they get to rescue Luke. and they get to rescue Luke out of the clutches of getting shot down by a Tie Fighter.
So, did you like that particular storyline?
Uh, Chewie looked good. I'll say that one straight off the bat. He didn't look like a brown butt rush.
That's cause it was drawn by somebody else, as we learned.
Yes. Um, overall, it was, is a nice story.
Mm-hmm.
It didn't really, you know, make me think very much, it's like, okay, another adventure, here we go!
Yeah, and, and it kinda was meant to be that way. It was sort of a filler they put in just before Empire Strikes Back.
Mm-hmm.
So, you get a little bit more of a, of a nondescript storyline, but it does actually give you a little bit of closure with the goofy glasses guy, so.
Mm-hmm.
I guess there's a bit of that, but for the most part, it, it, yeah, it doesn't have a lot of bearing on what happens after that, but as we've noted before, the movie, the books, the comic books didn't have much to do with the movies, and the movies had nothing to do with comic books, so. Realistically, there wasn't much they could influence, so they were just hoping to sort of spin along for the ride.
True. They do put in a line there, though, uh, the Empire strikes back. I'm like, haha, that's coming in like eight comics.
Yeah, you have to think they knew that by then.
Mm-hmm.
But, cause that was like a year left before the actual movie, I think, got released, so, or even less than a year, if it's eight months. So, cause of course, those comics came out once a month.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, unlike now, where they seem to sort of kinda come out whenever they feel like. So, okay. Yeah, I thought it was pretty good. I thought it was an interesting storyline. Like I said, it didn't move anything along, really, other than that confrontation with Tag, who's kind of the placeholder for Darth Vader, for the most part. You know, he's, he's somebody who has a lightsaber that can fight Luke, who's on a level that isn't like uber masterful and doesn't wipe the floor with him.
Mm-hmm.
And it's before Luke has to actually fight Darth Vader the first time, which I'm pretty sure they had more or less already made note of the fact that they didn't want him fighting Darth Vader till then. But, yeah, so, interesting. Uh, next week, we'll be talking about Marvel's issues thirty-five to, or, yeah, thirty-five to thirty-eight, which will take us right to the edge of Empire Strikes Back. And we'll kinda see how Marvel migrates into the movie. And what that, if it, anything means to them, because of course, one thing that does come out of all this is after Empire Strikes Back's over, we have a change in some of the artistry and, and a lot of the things that happen after that are kind of post, uh, Carmen, is it Carmen Infen- Infanto? Uh, but anyway, the artists who drew them originally, and kind of the, the coloring and design of the comics start to change, and become a little bit more like comics we look at nowadays, instead of the seventies, really high-color, hard edges, strange design look, which we got a lot of. So, as we move into eighties Marvel instead of seventies Marvel.
Mm-hmm.
So, I guess that's it for the comics this week. Is there anything else you wanted to add, Robert?
Hmm, not this week.
Okay. All right, so I guess that's it from us for this week, and we will talk to you again next week. We'll have even more news and spoilers, I'm sure, coming down the pike. We've kinda kept you out of the, the spoilery movie news, because I, I don't wanna get too far into it even for my own volition, but if there's something big that we need to talk about, we certainly will, and I, I won't hold back just because I don't wanna spoil it for me. Um, but otherwise, we'll, we'll keep it as limited as possible, because I don't think it's fair, you know, unless we put up massive spoiler warnings before we do anything.
Mm-hmm.
But we will certainly continue to talk about the old comics and the new comics, and any news that comes along, which we have interest in. Uh, one thing that I've been told you should try or, or have a look for in your town, if you still have arcades near town at all, is Star Wars Battle Pods, which is a arcade-only game.
Hmm.
Which is based on playing in Tie Fighters and X-Wings, so.
Some.
Looks cool.
Go ahead.
I was gonna say, it looks cool. Don't know much about it, other than that.
Maybe we'll see something like that at Gen Con this year, because there was a Battle Pods thing there last year, but it was all mechs.
All right, okay.
So, maybe.
Maybe, yeah.
I will let you guys know when I find out.
In a couple or few months.
Uh, month and a half is when events get released, so maybe they'll have it up by then.
Awesome, awesome. All right, great, so we will talk to you all next week, so for Robert and I, see yous later.
Take care, everybody.
This podcast is a part of the Nerd Institute network of shows and is affiliated with Distractions Media. For more information, please visit distractionsmedia.com.